Six o'clock. For your way called meeting order. For lack of a minister being here, I'll provide an indication. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings, your grace and your guidance. Lordly ask, as we gather as elected, as staff, as business owners and citizens, that you continue to be with us each and every moment of each and every day. Amen.
Amen.
Let's take a deep breath, please.
My children, to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council. Before you, did you do have an agenda? It's been sent out previously, the items are there, the packet is completed this time. Floor is open for motion to adopt the agenda supposedly.
Make a motion, we adopt the agenda that is distributed.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is your consent agenda. That includes amendments to the 2023 pay scale, the development report, financial report. Our report, please report.
Make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same. Thank you, council. City council and public, staff, it is now my honor to recognize Ms. Lori Waters as our new city clerk from the city of Jasper. So, city council at this time, I will entertain a motion to officially appoint Ms. Lori Waters as the city clerk for the city of Jasper.
Summon.
In a second.
You can go ahead and give her a standing ovation. Yes. I know your wife.
Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same. Ms. Waters, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, coming to the meeting tonight.
And believe me, Lindsay is so upset.
Yeah, she's saying really.
Yeah, she's, she hates giving it up.
If we could, if we could go down front and grab a picture with our new city clerk.
What do you want?
Yeah.
Just get a picture with these pictures.
Okay.
Just four.
You've got to write it down.
Thank you. That's okay, it's all right.
So, we will look at you. That one. Friends, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yes, sir.
Yes, we're excited. Pretty sure you have not prepared this.
How you doing?
All right, council. At this time, what I will do is open a public hearing. There's a request by applicant Jim Hills to rezone parcel 031001 on the agenda. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this item? I have.
Jim Hills is here.
Yes, sir. He will stand, state your name. Does he die someone? Alec.
Hi. Jim Hills, owner of property.
Yes, sir. Anything you'd like to state?
Well, just a brief description of what happened. We acquired the property in '07, and Lonnie Water contacted us in '08 and wanted us to annex into the city, and we agreed to do that. There was some other stuff promised, but we agreed to do that. And he said that we could maintain the C2 zoning that we had currently when we bought it. So, we assumed that that would take place that way. I have an agenda from a meeting that was held on November the 24th, and it shows proposed C2 zoning. We came to find out that that had not taken place and that actually Lonnie told me that a mistake had been made and it had been zoned in as residential or agricultural. And he said he was going to fix it. So, even a couple of years ago, I noticed on the map that it was still residential agricultural. And he said then he was going to fix it. So, here we are, hopefully going to fix it tonight.
Yes, sir. We appreciate that. All right. I believe on the agenda I do have Mary Burgess, Development Director, listed also. Ms. Burgess, do you have anything to speak? See if you body over.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mary Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. As Mr. Hill has said, this is to fix an era that had occurred on our zoning map. As you know, if you go with two passes or two adoptions of the zoning map, you can no longer update it as a Scrivener's Era. You have to come and do the public hearing again. So, just to give you a little bit, on the parcel, it is almost 70 meters. It has 2,400 linear feet on 515, and it does have a cell tower on it. And it does have entrance off of 515 right now. So, as you can see, on the left is the assessor's database. He's lucky enough that he has been being charged for commercial taxes all this time and not getting the benefit. So, on the right is our zoning map that has, the star is the parcel, and as you can see, it is still RA with the other parcels as well. When I went through the minutes from that year, and there was a notation that stated that they made a motion to adopt all of this, all of these, and then to attach here too. Well, there was no attach here too, and we do have the agenda from that time. So, we are led to believe that a lot of these parcels did not get changed on the zoning map, but were done in 2008. So, unfortunately, we will have to go back and take a little bit more of a look into those and see what we can find about that. But Mr. Hill came up and discussed this with me, and I said that we could go through the process. And so, just so you know, it is within our comprehensive plan to have this as a C2 on our corridor, as you are aware. But as we said, there isn't, it never got done when it should have been 2008. So, it was highway business in the county, and as you are aware, we changed a lot of highway business to C2 when it is fitting. So, as always, this application is direct by zoning map era, and this rezoning does not guarantee any public utilities or infrastructure. So, it just guarantees a commercial use as it should have been in 2008. So, our SASS recommendation is approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here to comment on this item? With that, I will close with Brother Peter. We will move on to unfinished business. Item number one, consideration approval for alcohol license sell line by the package for Woodbridge General Store, council, based from our legal. This has been an item that's requested at table to be continued to March 4th, 2024.
I make a motion to table it.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post same. Thank you, council. Item number two, consideration approval of ordinance 2024-01, rezoning of parcel 0538-097003 from C2 to C1. I have Mary Burgess, Development Director, listed. Ms. Burgess.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mary Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. If you recall, this is a parcel out on Liberty Lane. We went through this at the last meeting, it was tabled. Just to give you a quick overview of what we saw, the proposed use is for amicola propane. And they are to put in a 40-by-50 single-story building. They're going to have some trucks parked there and some self-service propane. So, Plank Commission did recommend approval with conditions. As you know, our usual conditions are up there, as well as a couple of others. Must exit Liberty Lane via Harmony School Road. So, that's to avoid that steep Liberty Lane onto 515 there. And also, this property is limited to a propane facility and distribution use. And then, all these cycling requirements such as Chapter 18, 26, 34, 66, 82, and 86. So, Plank Commission and staff recommend approval with conditions.
Thank you, ma'am. Council on item number two under unfinished business, floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, I have a second.
Second. Mr. Hill.
Motion and second, any discussion, council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post same.
He was trying to say.
Thank you. Item number three, Pinnacle Holdings LLC cease and desist appeal for 191 Interstate South Drive, Jasper, Georgia, joint agreement to continue until 3/4/2024 per city attorney. I do have Ms. Burgess and Ms. Goldner down. I'll let one of you speak if there's anything to be said other than, I believe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We have been working diligently to resolve this issue, and we think another month will help us get to this property into compliance.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, at this time, floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion, we table to the March 4th meeting.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, council? There's no one in favor?
Aye.
Post same. Thank you, council. New business, item number one, consideration approval of ordinance 2024-03 to rezone parcel 031001 located at 3458 Highway 515 North from RA Residential Agriculture to C2 General Commercial. Ms. Mary Burgess.
Thank you. As you just heard during the public hearing, we are asking for this parcel to be rezoned from RA to C2 to fix a mapping era that occurred back in 2008.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, floor is open for a motion.
Summon.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you, council. Thank you, sir, for being patient with us. We appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to item number two, consideration approval for Gateway Crossings LLC Development Agreement. Ms. Kim Goldner.
Good evening, mayor, council. So, we've talked about the Gateway Crossings Shopping Center project at a couple of council meetings last year, one at March, and then again in December, which discussed the developer actually replacing the water main, doing some upgrades to the water main along Camp Road, facilitating those upgrades for us in a faster fashion than we may be able to do so in order to bring Publix and the other businesses that are coming to that parcel. Those incentives included a waiver of not to exceed amount of cost to construction and permit fees, a monetary contribution to reimburse the developer for a portion of the engineering and surveying and legal work that they were doing on our behalf with designing the upsized main, and then the city purchasing the eight-inch water main as we could do that with no tax, the sales tax relief on that and providing that for that project. All of those things have been approved by council at both the March 30th meeting and then again at the December 18th meeting, when we had to make some amendments to those amounts. This agreement that is in your package this evening is the developer agreement between the city and Wilcobb Gateway Crossing Jasper LLC. And basically, this just spells out the things that we include agreement on, on what the city would provide, the monetary contribution, the waived fees. And then, it also spells out the developer's requirements, things like having an anchor store lease in place within a year's time, which they have done that. A copy of Publix's lease is included in your agreement. There are some things that they will need to provide to the city in terms of their engineer certifying the water main as it is constructed before placing into service. And so, we ask this evening that council approve this development agreement so we can get this back to the developer and they can get started.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
As Ms. Goldner mentioned, all these items have already been approved. This is memorializing the actual agreement for items already approved. This time, floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion to consider approve Gateway Crossing Development Agreement.
Have a motion.
Push to approve, sir.
Have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number three, consideration approval of resolution 2024-03 for budget amendments to the 2023 budget. Ms. Lindsay Williams, Finance Director.
President, mayor, and council, in your packet you will find some of our budget amendments for the governmental fund for our 2023 budget. The general fund, we were going to adjust $55,903 for technology surcharge, $50,900 for hotel hotels, $50,515. You'll find in your packet the line item adjustments for these, for the, this will be partial adjustments, or we'll have some more after our audit that will be in March. But I was recommending, if we can, please make these adjustments to the budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, at this time, floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the budget amendments. These are brought by the audit staff, and I suspect that there will be more, but this is nothing irregular.
Second. Motion and second, council, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post same. Thank you, council. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Item number four, consideration of approval to approve vehicles and equipment for Jasper Police Department from the 2020s. I have Chief of Police Matt Dawkins and Ms. Kim Goldner listed. Chief?
Good evening, mayor, council. So, this evening we bring before you the request for Ford, the crawl vehicles. These vehicles will be, that we're looking at are the 2024 Ford Explorer. We've had a lot of good luck with the Ford Explorer. This is the last year, what we're driving before they start changing the whole body style. We did receive three quotes, one from Prater Ford, $42,611, brand Ford, $48,500, and Wade Ford, $51,110. The lead time on these vehicles would be somewhere by at the end of the first quarter, more likely the beginning of the second quarter before we would be able to get them. If we ever get these approved, this would put the police department in a position where we can start a rotation of cars. So, instead of coming up here every year asking for cars, we'd be maybe one car every year, maybe one or two cars every other year instead of three cars or four cars, which that was the goal that we're looking at getting. This will cut down on high-model vehicles. So, hopefully by the time they hit 80,000, we can pull them out. That's an awesome thing to do. And if we put all our uniform patrol drivers in a nice cars and low-model cars.
Fantastic. Do you think that did it, Miss Goldner?
No, that is correct.
At this time, entertain a motion to approve the expansion for these vehicles.
Summon.
One second.
Second. And that's for 42.
Correct. 42, 611. For the public's information, though, I would like to tell them what's coming out of the SPOS again.
Yeah, because we were coming out of SPOS again, it's going to be in the 2024 budget to come out of SPOS, our 2020's SPOS.
2020, yeah. Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Post same. Thank you, council. All right. Thank you, chief. Item 4B.
Okay, I've asked chief to stay because he may be able to fill in some details for me in case I miss anything. So, this is item 4B. I didn't want to get this lumped in with the approval of the vehicles because this is a unique vehicle that we are talking, are bringing before you this evening. In early January, staff was made aware that the Sheriff's Department had purchased a new mobile command unit and the one that they have been using for their public outreach, and as a mobile command unit, they would be selling and wanted to know if we might be interested in that. It is, I believe, 24, 28 feet long. It is outfitted with all of the screens. It is an ideal use for a mobile command unit. We have not had the need for something like that in the past. However, with our growth projected in the city, I think that it is just a matter of time where we will have a need for an incident command unit that we can take out. In the meantime, it would be an ideal use for public outreach, for educational purposes, taking it out to things like National Night Out, out to the Derby, for our downtown events throughout the summer. It will be an excellent cooling station when it's really hot evenings. It can be a warming station as well. Really, the possibilities are kind of endless for its use. I propose that we have this rewrapped with three, basically the city's brand. And so, it would be police, fire, and the city. We will need to have the unit rewrapped regardless. It is currently wrapped as the Sheriff's Department. They will be removing that should we be authorized to purchase that unit. And I would like to have it to where all departments could use that. One of the things that we had talked about in the Public Safety Committee is the need for a policy on use. Should we take this step and purchase this to where it may be housed with one department, but other departments would have the ability to use. There would be certain sign-out rights. There would be just a process that everyone would have to go through, and there would be a very limited group of folks that would be able to drive the vehicle as well. The cost for this unit is $25,000. We believe it would take another 15 roughly to do the rewapping using the Thermo of the city. So, we're talking $40,000. We do not necessarily have to have this right now, but I think it is a great opportunity for the city to take part in using this unit, having it when we need it in the future, and then, you know, not having to look for one when we are ready for one because $25,000 is considerably less than what we would be looking at should we go out and purchase one, even used, from somewhere. Both the police and the fire department have agreed that they can chip in a portion of that 40,000 total. They're looking at roughly 17,5 from each department, and then we would use the additional 5,000 from the enterprise fund because honestly, the water department is likely going to be the one that uses it as well. And they would have the use for public outreach from a water perspective, learning labs, things like that. So, we would use SPOS funding for approved projects on that. Should you not want to use SPOS funding, we could use general fund. We have fund balance that could purchase this. I'm asking council's approval to take advantage of this opportunity here this evening and purchase that mobile command unit.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, before you, number 4B, approval for this expenditure in the amount of 40,000, not to exceed? Floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the purchase and the wrapping of the vehicle and include a thank you to the Sheriff's Department for this opportunity.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Lindsay, can you tell, what's our enterprise fund now come out?
I don't know off the top of my head where the balance of being our enterprise fund.
It won't part.
Oh, gosh, probably maybe 2.8.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Post same. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Item number five, consideration of approval of 2024 Tourism Development Services Agreement to Pickens County Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Kim Goldner.
Thank you. So, annually, the city enters into an agreement with the Pickens County Chamber of Commerce for tourism development services and for the allocation of 2/3 of the 6% hotel motel tax that we collect. In your package is the 2024 agreement, which has been provided by the chamber for discussion this evening. I have Amberly Godfrey is here from the chamber. Should you have any questions you would like for her to come up in and present during your discussion portion.
Hi, Amberly.
Counsel, at this time, floor is open for a motion to approve the agreement.
Summon.
Second.
Motion and second, I have any discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Address Amberly Godfrey.
That's well.
Amberly, you know what a strong proponent I am of the Chamber of Commerce. When we started this journey, I served as the chairman of the board of the chamber, and I believe I was on the chairman of the hiring committee for your position. But the point of this is, I think that the relationship, the hotel motel tax situation has changed quite a bit over the last several years, and it's been a while since we've updated our philosophy on that. So, in the coming year, we would like to be able to sit down with you and hopefully with the county as well, and maybe take another look at how we might better serve our community. Not that you're not serving them well now, but that was some of the discussions that we had in our decision to move forward with this. It means you had the job you've done, and we just want to make it better for all of us if we can. So, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sonny. I'll be very open to that.
Thank you. Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Post same. Thank you, council. Committee reports. Development and local infrastructure, Dr. Bronker and Mr. Bass.
So, I think in our last meeting, I think there was a lot of focus on some of the issues that we're having with some of our projects that are already underway, particularly as it relates to stormwater. And Amy has been here one year, and she reminded us tonight, a lot of her focus has been on the management of stormwater. Similarly to the map issues, there are some things that have come up that have been with us for quite some time, and we continue to address those as well as, as well as address the new projects. We continue to get frequent people reaching out to us about wanting to do different types of developments, and we are still trying to hold the line, mostly as it revolves around our master plan, which we have been undertaking. We're very close to having that completed, which will give us a firm understanding of our capability to provide services, particularly water, and so we're with increased focus on stormwater management. So, that ties into local infrastructure, which I can talk about in our enterprise fund as well. But needless to say, our infrastructure needs some work, and we're identifying those needs, and we're finding ways to pay for those things in a way that's mindful of the resources that we have and the long-term outlook for our city. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Came out a whole lot good, but I do want to tell Ms. Burgess, thank you for the good job she's doing. The first staff, they really help us out, and it's really appreciated on our side.
Thank you, committee. Finance and admin, Jim Looney again, same.
Thank you, council, for approval of some of the topics we have been discussing, both on the consent and... both on consent agenda and that, on the new business. Committee looked at some job descriptions we met last Wednesday, looked at some job descriptions and I think they are moving through the system now, also looking at vehicle policies and use policies that we need to do a little bit more work on before we bring them to you for consideration.
And one of our recommendations was the pay scale adjustment on our salary captain position that's coming open. We had to look at that intensely to get a far candidate. Thank you.
Enterprise committee, Dr. Proctor and Jim Loon.
Want me to go? I was just going to mention that work continues on the wastewater plant. I think we're getting a better idea when we can expect that project to be completed, but all of us need to understand, equipment is terribly difficult to get hold of right now and that could affect the schedule at any time. While we are optimistic, there are plenty of things out there that could continue to go bad. Many, I want to talk about the interview, well, I was at the interview, you weren't.
That's correct.
You can't really talk about that one.
I'm not about the result, but you.
Yeah, we did interview for the new director of water plant operations. We probably going to move it more into water operations and.
We've got some added items.
Yeah, added items that we'll be putting on that. I've got a very good candidate, offer has been made and I'll let Kim make the announcement on that when she's ready, but we were very pleased with that happening.
So, on the water side, we continue to press the EPD on our, the use of our mines as a reservoir. Again, the particular situation we find ourselves in here, this has never been done in the state of Georgia before, but we feel very good about the relationship with EPD and that continues to slowly move forward. We've had geologists in, we've had the projection for what we anticipate our system looking like has been presented to EPD. Also, on the new well drilling, the location that we picked was a little bit too close to one of, to one of the streams in the area, but that is, that is going before EPD, I believe, in their March meeting. There have been some new concessions on that statewide and hopefully that will get before then. We anticipate them giving us to permission, giving us permission to do an exploratory drilling into the area that the geologists feel very good about the possibility of finding water. We've started upgrades, or we're planning to start some upgrades on our water treatment facilities, which like most of our facilities have been not kept up quite as good as we would like, but we have identified some, some simple and some complex issues that we're starting to address as we're able to. We have had some trouble lately with some of our sewer infrastructure, which has required some relatively urgent action, but right now, we are holding our own and we get a new plant coming on, possibility for new water, and we continue to explore other sources for our water as well. So, garbage, not much really to add on that. It's also enterprise, but that's it.
Thank you, committee. Parks and Properties, Brandon Hammond, John.
A couple of weeks ago, me and Brandon was able to ride around and look at the parks and take in what's going on. We're still working with our engineers on both City Park and with Lee Newton. Doris Waden is really looking excellent. They're coming around along with the trails, it's amazing. So, and then we're hopefully have bathrooms by April. So, we got a lot of stuff coming this way. I think we can be pleasantly surprised when we're done.
And I just want to add that, you know, when we were riding around, did see a mattress that was tossed aside there, so just want to challenge the citizens to do better, you know? The recycling center's right down the road. They take these items, you know, we take pride in our places, so leave it better than when you found it.
Thank you. Public safety, Brandon Hammond, Hammond's name?
Well, the fire, police, and the city now speak Spanish and two hundred and thirty-nine other languages. So, we have a language service line now available for our staff to leverage and hopefully better serve our citizens. So, really excited to be able to offer that to the people of Jasper here.
Correct. And we talked about the mobile command unit, also the four vehicles for the police department and the pay scales, so I don't have anything else to offer. We continue to work toward our goal.
Speaking of public safety, if you'll excuse Chief Share, he was running a call to the emergency earlier, so thanks for joining us when you could, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you to give us an update on the Pro Park?
Yes, sir. So, Pro Park, we are going through that state environmental review process right now, which is to kind of clear through all of the agencies like DOT, DNR, historic preservation, the Indian tribes, through all of those agencies that they will allow you to go ahead and proceed with your project. We got a request back from the Cherokee Nation in eastern North Carolina that they believed that Pro Park was very near the potential site of Trail of Tears. And so, they had asked us to go ahead and do a cultural resources survey of that property. We brought VHB, you may recognize that name, that's Vanas Hagen Ruslin. That is the company that does our water quality monitoring. They also provided a quote for this cultural resources survey. They do archaeological work through another business division. We went ahead and signed with them and they have completed their assessment. They found two isolated finds, is what they're called. One of them was a piece of pottery, they believe, very close to, I would say where the Old Rover Hospital was, back from maybe the nineteen forties, is what their assessment is. They also found something, it looks like maybe an arrow tip or a knife tip from much earlier time than that. Both of those being isolated finds, though, they believe that that is not going to prohibit us from going ahead and proceeding with our project. VHB is in the process of formalizing their report and that they will send that on in to the Cherokee Nation for their review and as soon as we get the okay, we'll go ahead and provide everything to DCA and get that final stamp of approval to start.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, council, we have executive session for legal personnel. entertain a motion to go in executive session.
Sir, where?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post second? Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for being with us this evening.
Thank you.